Are you ready, Richard?
I'm ready.
Okay, this is the Ocean Shores Plan Commission meeting. Meeting via Zoom Tuesday, July 13th, 2021, approximately 2:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded. So roll call, Greg Cox.
Here.
Rich Hartman.
Here.
Eleanor Dorman.
Yeah.
Richard Wills.
Here.
Patrick Brunstedt.
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse Tanya Roberts?
So. Second.
So it was Eleanor and Greg?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, the motion approved the meeting agenda.
We approve the meeting agenda.
Exactly.
So move. Do we have any, oh, the motion approved the minutes of June 22nd, 2021.
The only thing is, it's a minor point, but the next meeting was labeled July 6th instead of July 13th, so otherwise it's fine.
The motion approved the agenda with that correction. The vote, the minutes with that correction.
I moved.
Second.
Okay, so move. We have public comment?
I did not receive any written public comment. We do have two citizens on the line. Marlene, do you have a public comment?
No, I just want to apologize for my last name not showing up. I don't know where or how to fix that. So Marlene Penry, thanks.
Okay, and then Don Williams. Don, do you have a public comment?
Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, no comments, just checking, thank you.
Okay, I guess we move on to architectural features, 1750, 2020, and I'm reading that one. And that's architectural features. Pat went out to Denny and asked about what current code says no dwelling structure should occupy more than 40% of the total lot area. This question is, does that include things like detached garage sheds enough? It doesn't. If it doesn't, are they any coverage restrictions that apply to those items? And then his reply is the dwelling structure is not, not accessory. The dwelling structure is not accessories, does not include garages, detached garage and accessory structures and only restrictions by setback rules, setback rules, different age depending on the water, water, right, interior. So what I did, I, I, when I say you got this, I came up with, okay, six lot scenarios. And based upon that, the first slide is actually mine. And I, I don't have an extremely big house, but I've got a reasonable sized house. So I have a 10,800 square foot lot. And 40% is 4,320 square feet. My house approximately 1,900, my garage is about 500, so that's 2,400 square feet. So my coverage according to the dwelling structure only is 22%. But I also have, I said, okay, what if we count the detached garage or shed? I have a pretty large detached garage, it's almost 1,200 square feet. So I added that to 2,400, so that's 3,600 square feet. So I'm still only 33% covered. So, and, and there, I did a lot of other scenarios down to 8,000 square foot lot. They did, so we probably only do a 1,600 square foot home, 500 garage, that's 2,100 square feet, that would be 26%. Even if they put on a detached garage, say 650 square feet and a couple sheds for 400, they'd be 3150 or 39%. I just don't think this is an issue at all. I, 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 I think there are a few houses around that the lots are so small that if, if just the house itself and the attached garage may get you close to that 40%. And I'm thinking of three or four houses just off the atrium and the golf course. They are small lots and they got them filled up, but I can't imagine they're over 40%. Okay, Eleanor?
I looked at listings for about a week and found that the, the average lot is about 9,000 square feet. The average house is about 1,900. If you added 600 square foot for three outbuildings, plus the average size two car garage, there would still be 600 square feet left you could build on, even on a lot that small. It, it seems clear to me from my numbers and yours, Dan, that the 40% included all structures, not just living structures. And if you would like to see the result of what happens when you go and call it, this only applies to structures you can live in, go down to Canal Drive, the corner of Canal and Alder, behind the old Ace Building. And Marlene may remember this, about five or six years ago, they began building there and people were complaining that they were filling up the lot with this house. And I went down and looked, I had Alicia look at it, and she said, no, it meets code. It meets code because of the, the way this was phrased as living or some, some term that, that indicated just living area. That house, other than approximately 10 feet on one side, goes lot line setback to lot line setback and covers the whole darn thing. And you really need to go look at it to see that when you take this literally and count only the living space to what 40% comes to, you can see what a disaster that creates. I think clearly it was meant to be any structure on the property cannot contain over 40% of the lot.
Richard?
There's approximately 12,000 lots in Ocean Shores, if my memory is correct. And we've got one lot out of 12,000. It feels to me like we're fixing a problem that doesn't exist.
No, we are just, we are talking about the word.
I'm not finished. We're fixing a problem that doesn't exist. And, and so, so why, why is it important to the building standards? I'm asking the question, why is it important to the building standards that we change the, the existing regulation that seems to me that the setbacks cover? And the, the number of people who are going to overbuild by the interior seems so minuscule. I'm asking, is it worth changing the code to fix a problem that I don't perceive actually exists?
I, I, I would love to answer that. If we want to keep green in this community and keep enough open space to house the animals that are on this peninsula, we have got to work towards keeping green space. If suddenly you have hundreds of lots being built out, setback to setback, I, I think you're creating a problem for nature. And I think that this is a case of wording that was misinterpreted. I mean, I think it's critical that we keep green space and open space on this peninsula for when it is built out. We still have to coexist with nature.
I'm, I'm curious what other people's thoughts are.
I'd like to know Marlene's thoughts on that.
Rich Hartman?
I have a question. As the lots that we discuss are fairly large, don't we get into a position where some of the smaller lots make that more of an impossible feat to keep within that 40%? I know we have various sized lots across the city.
I think the smaller lots are around 8,000. And I think clearly you can put the average sized home in an 8,000 square foot lot, have room for three 200 square outbuildings and a two car garage and have room to spare.
So the, the lots on the northern side of the city are not part of this discussion? In the different zone?
I don't understand the question.
Let's go up towards the north side of town where we have some different zoning, where we are allowed modulators and, you know, campers and trailers and such. Do those come into play in our discussion or those because they're different zoning, they don't count here?
I, no, they would not count in my view, they are a different zone.
People are, you know, shouting from the rooftops about, you know, affordable housing. We know that ends up being smaller lots that don't have much lot line, you know, they don't have that much green space anymore.
If you even took a 6,000 square foot lot, you could still build 2,400 square feet on it, which gives you room even for the average size home and an overlarge two car garage. I think it's just a case of look into the future and make sure that we have green space when this community is built out.
So Eleanor? Um, I'm looking at the, the study sheet that we have, architectural features. And if you look over to the far right column, it says lot six, and that's the smallest lot size, you know, it's 8,000 feet. And it, I'm guessing these are examples. So that pretty much reflects the example that you just articulated. And even with the detached garage and shed, it's still, you know, the total impacted area is 39% of the lot. And, you know, I do generally agree with your premise about preserving green space. But here we've gotten an illustration called lot six that shows that you can have a fair amount of development on it and still be technically under the 40%.
Right.
So, is this, is this an issue, given the, the illustration you brought up? Is this an issue of compliance, meaning enforcement, like so many issues that we tackle?
I don't think so.
Well, then what would we change? Why is 40% the wrong number?
I don't think 40% is the wrong number. What is the wrong word is it indicates that the 40% is only living space. It excludes garages and outbuildings. And I'm saying that the 40% should be area you can build on the lot. So it's not going to change numbers, it's going to change the wording to you can build out 40% of your lot, whether it be living spaces, garage spaces, outbuildings. If you include all those, you can build out 40% of your lot. And if you, you know, I, go ahead.
You live with the 40% being permitted structures?
Correct. So it could be garages, houses, the three 200 square foot outbuildings. All seems to fit right into the 40% or less.
So you would actually like the outbuildings as part of the 40% as well, the unpermitted?
Correct. That's the only change I want to make.
I'm trying to raise my hand, I, there's starting to show up.
Okay, Richard?
So, so my concern is actually that this feels like it's an encroachment onto the property owner's rights to do what he or she wants with her, his or her property. So it's, it's starting to smell, I think the, the right word is DNR, where, where there's restrictive covenants about what you can and cannot do. I mean, we want to paint in the house purple. And, and are we now going to say, you can't paint your house purple because I don't like it? And, and so my primary concern, first, I, as I already said, I think that we're fixing a problem that doesn't actually exist. But even more important, I think that we are creating restrictions that, that we don't have any useful reason for creating those restrictions. When I go out and, and I'm paying the taxes on the property, I should be able to do within reason, pretty much what I want and what we're discussing right now is if I want to cover more than 40%, is that within reason? And for me, it, it just doesn't bother me if my next door neighbor puts up nine 200 square foot buildings. It, it just doesn't bother me. It's not my property. Now, if he puts up 200 parapaper shacks, but that's a nuisance ordinance issue, not a lot coverage issue.
Eleanor?
I think to say you should be able to do what you want with your own property. Just, I don't understand because I don't get to do what I want. I have to have setbacks, both front, back and sides. We all have rules that we have to live with. And I don't think this is a change. I think it's a clarification. I think it was a misrepresentation when the last, the last time it was written. I, I really think it's clearly that.
Yeah.
Yes, the, my question is this, is this a rampant problem in Ocean Shores? Do we, do we have multiple lot after lot after lot that the density of the structures on them just seem unreasonable? I mean, if, if it's a one-off thing, I don't think we should address it. But if it's a rampant thing, then yeah, maybe it's, it's, it's good discussion, but I personally haven't observed where it's a problem.
Could be though. I mean, I think it's, this is a case of looking into the future. We don't know what will and will not be a problem in the future. I, I think what we do know is we need to keep green space. I think what we do know from these numbers is 40% coverage of the lot is reasonable. It can happen on almost any lot in town. And I think there are people that will go overboard in future. And I think it's just look into the long term to make sure we have plans and space in place to ensure we have green space in the future.
Anybody else?
My camera's not picking it up. So this term green space gets bandied up around a lot. And I was having a discussion with someone yesterday, and in my mind, a, the, the golf course lush lawn is not wildlife habitat space. And what Eleanor is, what, what I perceive Eleanor arguing or discussing is, is that we need to provide wildlife habitat green space. And so virtually all of the lots with David Lynn being a primary example, exception, almost all little lots that have houses on them are covered in a, in a lawn. And, and I don't see that as wildlife habitat. It's green, but, but it's not wildlife habitat. And so in my mind, restricting the homeowner ability to, to, to cover his property with his structures, first, as I and Pat Brunstedt have both pointed out, it's not a problem in Ocean Shores, it could potentially become a problem. And as Rich Hartman pointed out, that, that as we undertake affordable housing, which is going to come on our plate in the near future, then, then are we restricting the ability to put up affordable housing? And does that actually serve the best interest of the community? I still don't see why we need to tell somebody that 60% of their yard has to be grass. Or whatever it used to cover it in, besides, besides, maybe they want to cover it in greenhouses and grow vegetables, and I'm all for that.
Eleanor?
I just want to respond to affordable housing. If, if you're going to talk about affordable housing, you're usually talking about smaller housing, so it's not going to be affected by changing one word. I, I just think it's clear to me from the numbers that the, the original intention was you can build out 40% of your lot. But I guess we'll agree to disagree.
Richard?
So, affordable housing, and this is a direct correction, but it's still on target. But as the, as the planning commission undertakes a discussion on affordable housing, one of the things that I could see coming about is that somebody has, you know, a, a one and a half acre lot and they put in a, a, I don't know what word I want to use, a hotel worker's environment. And, and so they fill that up with the little tiny house that are down along Marine View Drive next to the beach. And that then could become an affordable housing that, that school teachers and, and restaurant workers and so forth could afford to live in. And it would in some ways resemble a, a, like the, the part that, that Rich was talking about where all of the mobile homes are located. Those are pretty small lots. And, and, and I could see affordable housing being built that close together to accommodate. As long as I'm on the affordable housing issue, I personally have a subject with a, an issue with affordable housing because what that really means is it means subsidized housing because.
Okay, Richard? We're way off track, we're way off track.
Okay, well, I'll say that for affordable housing discussion. I just want to preclude the ability in the future to, to designate lots that could become densely populated with affordable housing.
Okay, let me ask a question. Greg, you want to go first? You want to ask my question?
Well, look, I, I don't have all that much heartburn with what Eleanor's proposing. I mean, if we want to make the 40% apply to permitted structures, so fine, I, I don't think that's a big issue.
Well, okay, permitted, but now you can get people to put in sheds that don't need to be permitted.
Right. So the 40%, the 40% applies to permitted. I, I mean, are we, are, are we, is the alternative that we want? Is the alternative that we want the 40% to apply to every, every constructed building, whether it's, you know, a shed that you, a tough shed that you buy at Home Depot? Is that what we want? Is that what we're trying to, to, to argue in the alternative?
Okay.
I didn't think we were.
Eleanor, then Pat, then I'd like to see a motion because we're going to beat this thing to death.
So let me just.
I think we, go ahead. I thought you said me first, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, you first.
Go ahead, Eleanor.
The numbers that we, that we ran included at least three outbuildings at 200 square feet each, at least a two car garage and an average size house. And there was still hundreds of square feet left over that they could build on, you know, if they wanted a larger house, well, well within the 40% mark. You could put the average size house, three sheds, two car garage and an additional two car garage and still be under the 40%. So I'm saying structures rather than living space.
It bad?
So I think maybe a compromise to this could be, don't allow any detached garages in the setbacks. So.
It can't be in the setback.
Yes, it can. They absolutely can. So they can be back in the 25 foot setback in the back, it doesn't have to be five feet off the property line, but a detached garage can absolutely go into a setback where the living space is not. So take that out, make it so that you don't have detached garages in the setback. Then you have a 25 foot back setback, a 20 foot front setback, there's your guaranteed green space. The other thing I wanted to point out, in the 30 years that I've been building, I can tell you that the wetland restrictions have gotten harder and harder and harder to, to build in and around. So by default, as we all know, there's a ton of wetlands in Ocean Shores, by default, our Department of Ecology has created permanent green space because you can't, they, they've added buffers to wetlands, they've added setbacks to wetlands. And so just by default, that has taken care of a lot of the green space issues that, that we're arguing about. But if you really want to, just don't allow any detached permitted structure in the setbacks.
I'm, I'm really kind of curious and I would like you to clarify, Pat, because I find this very interesting. You're saying that you can put your garage into the setback right now?
A detached garage can go, the setbacks for detached garage is different than the setbacks for a home. This detached garage can go within five feet of your property line anywhere. So that means that, that 25 foot rear setback, you can put a detached garage within five feet of that.
Okay, within five feet of the setback, not into the setback?
No, the setback for that detached garage becomes five feet, not 25 feet. So you can build a detached garage into the living structure setback.
Hmm, that's interesting because when we were building, I was told that I couldn't put a cover over my porch because it went into the, the setback.
That's part of your living structure, that is correct.
Hmm, interesting.
But if you want to build a garage detached, feel free to have an awning on it.
As long as it doesn't attach to your house. But I'm just saying that, that I, I think, I think it's a slippery slope that we're on taking away people's property, making it more restrictive.
I, I absolutely agree with you.
If you gentlemen live with a hypothetical of 40% is permitted structure?
Yeah, I could.
I can live with that.
And Richard?
Why we need to change what already exists. So far, out of, out of 12,000 properties, it's just not a problem. There's one property, one exception out of 12,000 that could become a problem in the, in the future. There's only 6,000 properties left up for sale. I don't see it becoming an issue. And, and I agree 100% with Pat. I want minimum interference with what I can do with my property and I want the interference to make sense. And, and in my mind, and somebody correct me, somebody made me see the light, somebody helped me see the light, in my mind, saying that green space for wildlife, we're not raising bunny rabbits.
You're not open to compromise, is what you're saying. You're not open to compromise, is what you're saying.
I'm, I'm willing to do with whatever the rest of the planning commission wants to do, but I don't see why we are being this restrictive when it's not a problem. Uh, one of the things is to constantly go out and fix problems that don't exist, and it's still seems like it exists.
All right, I, I'm gonna move that, uh, we we we, I'm gonna move that we modify the ordinance by inserting the word. I'm gonna read it. The current code says no dwelling structure shall occupy more than forty percent of the total area. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna move that we insert no permitted dwelling structure shall occupy more than forty percent of the total area.
Second.
You're just saying the same thing. You gotta take off the dwelling structure. It's gotta be forty percent of any, of any permitted structure.
Okay, drop dwelling. No permitted, uh, permitted structure shall not occupy more than forty percent of the total area. Period.
Second.
Okay, maybe further discussion?
Yeah, that, as part of the continuing discussion, what, what that's now says is that if I pull out a building permit, which would include detached garages and, and, and anything else that's larger than two hundred feet, but now I can still put in as many two hundred square foot sheds as I want to put in, and I'm okay with that. So, so I, I, I'm happy with, 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 with Greg's wording, but it didn't actually change it.
This is it, because now you can't build that separate garage and all of a sudden have sixty percent of the land land filled by garage and home.
Pat, you're, you're, you're more of an expert on this, and, and, uh, you've already explained that my detached garage can go twenty feet into a twenty-five-foot setback. Uh, so I'm having a hard time visualizing what changed.
Well, basically what's happened is if you have an eight thousand square foot lot, all you can do is put thirty-two hundred square feet of permitted structure in. So if you have a twenty-four hundred square foot house on an eight thousand square foot lot, that means that you can only do another eight hundred square feet. The, the challenge is, is these lots aren't all the same. Meaning that there are lots that are eighty feet wide, hundred and ten feet deep, but the setbacks are the same. So when you take an eighty-foot lot and you take the twenty-five in the back and the twenty on the front off of it, it only leaves you a hundred and ten feet of depth, hundred and five feet, no, excuse me. Sorry, one-ten minus forty-five is, what is that, sixty-five feet, seventy-five feet? Anyway, so it gets, it gets really restrictive on what you can do and what you can build if you now dial it down with the amount of square footage that you can cover. So that's, you know, as a builder and, and trying to find house plans that work, and let's say I've got a forty-foot RV. Now I can't build an RV garage on my property, and that's, to me, is bothersome.
I, I agree with you.
We're also forgetting that anything that we suggest goes to city council. Uh, I personally don't have a lot of struggles with the suggestion, but I don't believe city council is ever going to pass it either. So I, I feel like we're spinning our wheels on this one, one item.
Hey, shall we take a vote? All in favor of the, of what Greg recommended? Put your hands up. Opposed? If there's not pass.
Okay, I would make, I would make another motion now. And my motion would be that we, as the planning commission, leave the existing ordinance alone. Uh, uh, I don't see any reason for a change. So I'd make a motion that we leave the existing ordinance with its setbacks, uh, alone, and there's, there's no reason to change.
Well, you don't need a motion for that. We just did.
Okay.
That's the default.
It's the default. You're right.
Okay. Are we done?
We're done with that. We're done with that subject. Um, I'll go on. For those who didn't listen to council last night, we were part of their topic of what to give us. And, um, they, they thought, given us unfit buildings and loitering, but, uh, they decided to do that themselves. Um, I, uh, I've already written a letter to Susan, Lisa, and Eric on unfit buildings, because I've got one over here, and it appears they figured out how to beat the system. So I'm hoping they can take away that. Uh, it was brought up, uh, task list for comp plan zoning and action items. Well, that was discussed, and basically there's no need to do that until you get a file of comp plan, because even after the council passed and discussed, go back for public comments, so it's not undocumented till after public comment, so we won't be doing all those. But what they did talk about was affordable housing especially for the service industry, food trucks, and pyramid zoning. My opinion is, and it's up for discussion, I don't know how you do affordable housing here in zoning without having a comp plan. It's got to fit in there.
Well, I appreciate that, because that's one of the reasons I thought uh, addressing the proposed zoning changes, um, was timely, because it was designed uh, to, uh, eliminate the pyramid zoning concept that currently is in play. And so it's funny to me that the city council wants us to address it, but at the same time, they don't want us to deal with the proposed zoning changes. So I still think the proposed zoning changes are are an urgent matter that needs to be dealt with before we, uh, have more development that just uh, is contrary to what we had proposed back in twenty seventeen.
But you can't get zoning changes until the comp plan's completed.
Well, that's only by, that's only by definition. Uh, I mean, presumably, the city council, um, has already taken up the chapters that involve zoning. And, um, you know, I don't know how many more months, years it's gonna take to get through the entire document. But, um, uh, I'm guessing as they approve each chapter that, you know, they don't really have any intention to back and change the entire document. So it's, I think it's their own self-imposed definitions uh, about what constitutes approval that are holding us up.
Well, it's, it's separate, and then I'll get to you. They said that they hope they have the comp plan done by the end of September, be ready to go for, correct, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, go out for public comment, they'd have it adopted by the end of the year.
Well, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I mean, that, that that's.
Yeah. Richard?
I was gonna say the same thing. If, if I remember the conversation, they have actually completed all of the comp plan with the exception of chapters eight, nine, which are already done deals. And so they're on the verge of, of just wrapping up, and this should go to public comment, uh, in, 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 in the next month or so. Uh, and I, I can remember one meeting, Greg, you were instrumental in that meeting, where public comment, uh, uh, caused a whole bunch of changes to be considered. Uh, I don't think we can, we can make some assumptions about what's gonna happen, what would make good zoning changes, but we can't actually act on them until we have the comp plan. Uh, so, so in the interest of my notes, then, if you could email me afterwards and just tell me, I didn't, I didn't write down notes last night about what those issues that are left, but it sounds like they're potential future topics. And I want to include those potential future topics into these minutes. Uh, um, so if you can repeat them, and I can write them, or, or however, but to get back on task, I don't think we can address zoning or affordable housing until we have a comp plan approved by city council.
One item we can go after is food trucks, and it was brought up that that probably should be seasonal, so maybe between the two long holidays, one of the days of Labor Day. Don't allow, we'd allow food trucks to be in Ocean Shores. They've come up with a, a proposal for that. I would think that could take us a little bit of time, and maybe by then we'd be a little clearer what we could work on for the comp plan.
And why, why is it that I have been led to believe that as long as a food truck rents a spot at the convention center, that hypothetically, we could have a few of them this weekend if they chose to be here and rented a spot?
They have to, my understanding is they have to be attached to the people that rent the convention center.
I've been led down a slightly different path, so it might be nice to know if.
But like, yeah, it was like the, um, Shiloh brought in some food trucks for something they had there, and they were shut down. So it is an issue, uh, because you gotta get permitting. They would have to have a business license, I would think, uh, and so forth, so forth.
Help, help me understand how, you know, why is that a planning commission job? I mean, that sounds to me like, uh, um, business licensing. I'm not, I don't quite get it, and.
Well, it, it's, it's kind of like homeless shelters. We gotta have a procedure for them to be allowed to bring in a food truck.
Kind of, kind of curious on the food truck thing. I think right now, if you own a restaurant, you're allowed to actually have a food truck. I believe that's, that's, um, that's in something, in a way. But, you know, the challenge with the restaurants, so that the whole point behind the food trucks is to try and service all the people that come into town. Um, the problem with the restaurants, the reason that the restaurants can't keep up is because we can't get people to work. Um, so, you know, adding a bunch of food trucks, I'm not so sure you're gonna, A, make the restaurants very happy. B, if the restaurants thought that the food trucks would help, they would do it, but we can't find anybody to staff the food trucks. So the problem may be a little bit more than, hey, let's just do food trucks or allow food trucks.
And it's way, it's way deeper, as you said. Uh, let's not even start with the fact that you can't actually acquire a food truck right, right now. There, there are no worse or better than automobiles that are months and months out from coming in. Uh, you also have the gigantic personnel issue. We all know that. Uh, people are busy where they're already at, and although food trucks offer other sources, if it's a food truck that's actually preparing the food while there, it is no different than a restaurant. The food trucks that are fast are the ones that used to come around to to businesses that already had the prepared food in the back, and they made the products the night before and served them and went. The food trucks that most people think about are ones where you've got a cook and a cashier, and it's almost no quicker. Um, although it would be more access, it's no quicker than a restaurant is. Uh, but it starts with, there, there aren't food trucks out there for sale. But I believe that we could investigate the true rules at the convention center, because I think it's potentially easier than we think it is already.
The, the other issue from a restaurant owner's perspective is while the weekends are tough, because we're busy, the weekdays still were not at capacity. Um, you know, Bennetts is closed on Wednesdays now, and they're closed, and they're the number one grocery restaurant in Ocean Shores. They're closed because they can't staff. It's, it, that, that's the reason. Um, you start adding food trucks to the mix, and then while it does maybe solve some issues on the weekends, it kills the restaurants during the week. I don't think that, that that's, that's a good thing to do to our Britain order businesses.
Oh, it could be written where you just allow them on the weekend. I mean, we can write it any way we want.
We're, we are, we are already in a food truck discussion, and should that be an amendment to the agenda and put on this today's agenda, or should we defer food truck discussion to the next meeting? I'm asking for the sake of the minutes.
Um, no, I don't think it should go on the agenda. It, it was, you can put it underneath, uh, what's it called?
New business.
Yeah, new business, and my report, or whatever, planning commission members' report. I'm just reporting back to you, right, uh, I got out of the council meeting, and we elected to discuss it. Eleanor?
It seems to me several years ago when this came up that restaurants complained because they have to pay for a business all year round, rocks and mortar, um, and then have somebody come in on weekends when they're gonna get the most business and take the money and leave town. And I'm not saying I agree. I'm just telling you what was, uh, the, the concerns that were raised. Uh, and if I have to pay for bricks and mortar and you bring in a food truck, I think in their position, I'd, I'd be a little concerned too. Um, then there was talk about food trucks on the beach, and then some of the businesses, that's our tourist thing, said, gee, we want them to come off the beach to eat and shop while they're off the beach. Uh, so there was concerns by a number of businesses as to how this would affect the year-round, have to pay the dues businesses in town.
Sure.
Rich?
Uh, as far as the beach goes, I'm not sure that, uh, food trucks are even allowed there, since park departments under control those. Um, and there's no question that if this is a topic for our group, I would implore us to include members from the restaurant community to help guide us through the steps that, as far as we know, they might be supportive. We don't know, but they need to be a stakeholder in discussions.
Good point. Good point.
I, I agree with you, and when I heard that subject brought up last night, I said the first thing, if, when we're, when we, the planning commission, are given that task, is we need to get restaurant owners involved in this discussion. Uh, and, and Monjerno, the, uh, the, the double-barrel barbecue, she has a food truck. Uh, so she would absolutely be, be important to this discussion. Uh, but the other issue on food trucks, uh, I did a lot of research a, a year or two ago, and there's an RCW, and I don't remember it off the top of my head, but it, it demands that food trucks be within so many feet of a brick-and-mortar hot water source bathroom with one hundred percent permission for the food truck operators to use that facility, and that having a hot water at your food truck on the beach doesn't qualify, uh, because what happens to that food truck worker, uh, who has to, has to use the bathroom? And, you know, so, so, so without, without getting too much information out there, without going too, too deep into sanitation is one of the major issues driving food trucks. Pun was not intended.
Okay, so that's probably all we need to talk about food trucks. We have officially been given, yeah. It was just one of the topics that came up for us. I, as of our meeting, I still don't have anything from the mayor. So I don't know if anybody wants to look into it a little bit, just on their own, or, but it's not official yet. So I guess I'm, I'm kind of, um, wondering if maybe we ought to take our next meeting off.
I'll, I'll second that.
Somebody want to make a motion to not do our, whatever meeting it is?
Well, Dan, before we take the next meeting off, uh, uh, should we give the mayor the opportunity to put that on our plate at the next meeting? Pun was intended.
No, I, you know, quite frankly, I think it's time for break. No, I, you know, quite frankly, I think it's time for a break.
Oh, oh, I, I'm, I'm not at all opposed.
I'll make a motion that we forego our meeting on July twenty-seventh.
All in favor?
I.
So move, that was easy.
Or go the July twenty-second.
I spell it the French way, though, Richard.
I don't know the French spell. My wife speaks French, I don't.
Okay, does anybody have a calendar? What's our August meeting?
I can pull a calendar up pretty fast.
The tenth? August tenth is our next meeting.
Okay.
I, I'm not gonna be here August tenth. Not that that matters, but I'm asking for forgiveness.
You got it.
We need a motion on forgiveness?
I don't even actually need to put that in the minutes, that'll just come up at that meeting.
Greg, you're gonna be there on the twelfth?
What?
Yeah, I'll, I'll be there on the twelfth, but I gotta pick up my buddy in Seattle on the tenth.
Okay.
We could have a meeting on the boat.
Okay, the secretary for the next meeting on the tenth is Tanya Roberts. Okay, it's been a lively meeting. Anybody have anything else before we adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Who seconded?
Pat did. Okay, so you guys on the, on the tenth?